Judy Nelson, Yerick Tompkins, Emily Lee, Andrea Anderson, Aaron Kavanagh.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of America, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll open with any comments from visitors. Anyone who wants to welcome in 2020 with a comment. No one doing that at this moment, we will move on. We have the consent calendar at enrollment and the December school board minutes. All right, we've moved into a second, any discussion? All in favor of approving the consent calendar, signify by saying aye. All right, announcements and communication, and Charlie, you're up.
All right, I am. And that's for service.
All right, so this is our last board meeting before we have our deliberative session. And Charlie is our school district moderator. He was invited here this evening in case he wants to share anything with us or wants to share anything, wants us to share anything with him at this point.
Calendar would be helpful. And any thoughts you have about the warrant articles or changes to kind of standard operating procedure at the deliberative session would be helpful to me.
I don't think there are any changes to operating procedures. Anyone want to think about how all that was done at the deliberative session? I have a calendar here somewhere.
I have it.
You have it, okay. It's February 4th at 6:00 PM. With the snow date, should there be a reason to postpone? It's two days later on Thursday at 6:00 PM. So one of the things I think we had a problem with last year was the town clerk being notified. The town clerk, so that the, well, whoever the keepers of the...
Checklist?
Checklist.
Supervisors of the checklist.
Supervisors of the checklist.
They got there late, didn't they?
Yes, and I think that they weren't aware. So who's, do we know whose responsibility that is?
Is it?
Is it our clerk's responsibility, and that's Tasha Botella? Or is it your responsibility as moderator, just sort of? I don't really know. I mean, I'm happy to also, you know, the board can also notify.
I'll work together on it. Probably the buck stops here in that it's the moderator's obligation to run a good meeting. And you can't run a good meeting if you don't have your supervisors there to check people. So I'll take a hand in it. I wouldn't, my way of getting in touch, let's help you to know this, Angela. But my way of getting in touch with Angela would be through Kate.
Angela Matthews. She's the supervisor's checklist.
Oh, oh, okay, thank you. I'd forgotten that too. And I thought Kate sort of oversaw them, that's why I was thinking of getting in touch with the town clerk. But that, you're right, it's probably the right.
I think there's been some turnover within the supervisors, so that may affect things as well.
All right, so and if you want any assistance with that or going your own.
Do it.
Great, all right, so that was the only thing I could think of that we had a slight delay last year getting started. We also, and we do need things from the town office though too, like the ballot box.
I want to bring that. I think last year we didn't have any secret ballots asked for.
We did not.
It is possible, but the statute that allows for five voters to request a secret ballot applies to deliberative sessions, I recall.
I believe it does as well. And that's right, and the, and the, our administrative office brings, yeah, brings the little, brings the little pieces of paper to write on and things such as, which is very, it's nice. I think they usually come prepared as well, but you know, you never know when you might need pieces of paper. Right, a bit of housekeeping. And that's usually something that the school has, and we have new, they're new since last year. Or refurbished or whatever since last year.
Not the speakers, but yeah, the sound system, but we won't need the full sound system. The deliberative session will just need the speakers and like that.
Yes, oh, that's right. Childcare, that's right, we, and I, um, uh, do we as a board want to try to take something on? Or is there some other way to, what did we do last year? Is there another number? Good question.
Do you think we have some kids?
Kids, but I believe they have some teachers as well. I guess we could do it too, I wish we passed the school, let's see if our teachers want. Because it seems like, can we just do it with children of age or do we need have?
If we can just do it with children, they need a supervisor from the school to be in the room. Well, that's the question. That, right, so that's our question.
Didn't we have two non-residents here that were assisting with that, if I remember right?
Yeah.
So the residents could miss the need.
Which is very nice, but again, we, the board doesn't want to impose on teachers time. And this is an evening. And we're certainly willing, you know, we're certainly willing also to pay something. We certainly have not, unfortunately, I can't remember if we did last year or not, adults. I think we did as well.
Yeah, I mean, we could be so too cool and put it on the Marshfield schools. Are you paying to see if there are any children in Rollinsburg?
I'll volunteer my daughter, but she needs at least some older kids.
Yeah, and of course, we have no idea. So that's, that makes it difficult. And we would need to know, I would say by, probably by a week from Saturday, so we can get it published. And out, up.
We're talking to Kelly, see if any of the kids can do the rec, summer rec program.
All right, do you want to take that on? I think it's a great idea. So Emily will be doing that, who already volunteered her daughter. And we'll, and we'll just look for an answer from Rich or Bob about whether or not we need to, whether or not it's required to have a, an RGS person, adult in the room. Or are we pretty sure we do need to know?
Well, down at our PTO meetings, we meet in here and we have middle school age kids watch kids and the staff. But last year at the leave day, one of the classrooms down here, so that's a long ways away from the.
This is going to be a lot of adults in the building and I think it would make sense to have at least one adult.
I agree.
That's a good point. All right, then can we ask, you wish to sort of call the staff and see if there's someone who's willing to, and we will. What are you paying?
You're gonna skip the meeting? Down with the central.
I, I, I thought we'd, I really don't know, but I thought probably general is not. A flat fee of like 25, I don't know, I don't think it's going to be very long. Maybe a flat 25 or something like that. I mean, I don't know, but it's, it's not, you know. I also would like to suggest an amount. Maybe a flat 25 for the first two hours, if it goes longer, we'll have to, you know, a lot of times, you know, do bonus pay or something. All right, what else? Now Charlie, I mean, I thought things were well organized. In the past, you've gone through sort of what you're going to do, but don't do that again this evening. We're welcome, I think all of us, I think, no one's new sitting here who's been through it before we do so.
Okay, if there aren't recommendations for changes or requests for changes, I'm happy to leave it as it is. I try to run this open and unsurprising meeting as possible.
Now, the warrants, do we have an extra copy of the warrants? Go ahead, I did, I wasn't able to send you. Now, we, no, they're not finalized, they will not be final until after the budget committee's public hearing. We have, we actually have a school board meeting scheduled for right after that meeting in case anything changes at that point.
We could send them out to you next week.
But we can get them out to you next weekend in more final form.
That's fine. In their draft form, are there interesting, difficult, really important things that I should ask?
So there are two, there are two that are not, none, there are two. One, withdrawal from SAA 56, which has been approved by the, by the state board of education. It's been at Somersworth and Rollinsburg. And that one, it just might, it might be confusing, although we hope it will. And it's simply saying, it simply, it simply asks for the voters to, I do have a job somewhere, but to approve the withdrawal.
We will have our legal also.
Do you know who that would be?
Yeah, it's, yeah. And there is a cost involved with that, so, so in other words, the boards, the school boards for both Somersworth and Rollinsburg have entered into a contract for services. Because, and that's part of, I believe it even says in there, into contract services. Why am I not just pulling this up somewhere? Hang on a second, I have it right here. Yeah, it's right here. To see if the Rollinsburg School District shall accept provisions of RSA 194C, providing for the withdrawal from the school administrative unit involving the school districts, Rollinsburg and Somersworth in accordance with the provisions of the proposed plan. So it's, this only mentions the plan. So there will, and during that meeting, we will be explaining what the plan is. And that part of that is contracting with Somersworth for services. In essence, no change to what we're currently doing with Somersworth. Except, of course, that we now have no voting rights at the SAA level. That's essentially it, and.
We'll see where it goes from.
Goes from there. Jen, Len's sitting behind you was the chair of the withdrawal committee. And she's here to help us talk about getting the word out about stuff a little bit later on. We do have, we have some very good information. We have a slide presentation on, just on that sorts of things.
And I know everybody's favorite part of serving on the school board is explaining warrant articles at the beginning of discussion. That's all arranged or will be arranged when we get there?
It will be.
Oh, great.
It will be.
My observation is that it's really helpful for the voters. And actually say, this is what it means, here's why we proposed it.
Well, I think you're going to see us all kind of jump in on that, so don't be alarmed.
No, yeah, I mean, I think, you know, and it breaks out pretty easily. I mean, Emily's our rep at the budget committee, so she would be, you know, the first one with budget. Tom and Andrea were our reps at the collective bargaining agreement, so wants to jump in on that. The others, the next two are explanatory there. And then the last two are the ones that would be, need a lot more explanation. That, the withdrawal, because I think we do have to make sure that the plan's readily available for people. And again, we'll be discussing that later, so they can find it online or see a hard copy of it. And then the last article that we have on here, and we don't know yet if there are going to be any petition warrant articles, of course, but the last one is putting in front of the public sort of the results of what it would cost to send the sixth grade next year to Marshville.
So, and is there a, so that's a warrant article to present for information? Or is there a warrant article on the ballot to send our students, sixth grade students to Marshville?
It's an informational warrant showing what it will cost. If the voters say, oh yes, we don't care about the cost, please send them, we will. The board is not supporting that, but we did want to get out in front what the cost was going to be. And we haven't fully decided that as a board yet, so again, we'll.
Stay tuned, yeah, and I don't mean to.
No, no, it's the timing of things, it's.
No bonds?
No bonds.
The days of having to do three bonds in a single town meeting are now in my rearview year, so that's.
I'm not speaking for the town, this is just for the school.
Well, it's all SB2, so pump the deliberative session on a bond, I think is a little less challenging.
That's true. Any other questions, concerns, thoughts? And Rich, we'll spend some time with you, this Saturday is the budget committee's meeting, so it's the big table up front with, you know, 12, 13, 14 people, seats for that many people with the school board. Either in the front row or off to the side, who are supporting.
And the screen and the.
All right, that's good.
We're all over it.
Okay. So just two last things. One, I think it was town council. So in this, in the 21st century, the idea that we would have voters who were not literate struck me as not likely. And therefore, I was inclined to rely on all of the published warrants instead of rereading the full text of the warrant article at the deliberative session. Town council requested, urged, instructed, one of the above, that we actually read the whole warrant article. So we're going to read the whole warrant article, that's the one, takes up a little bit of time, but I think being respectful, so that maybe somebody who can't read it is, is appropriate. The other request is, you may, between now and when you finalize the warrant, you may get wind that there are advocacy groups that want to bring a petition warrant article. If you could encourage you and me, my, my general practice is if you're using technology and the petitioners want to use technology, we make the technology available and cooperate with people that way. I also think the voters appreciate having kind of full and fair notice and a, and a good process. So that sometimes when it seems like a petition is a surprise to you and to me and to the voters, it doesn't go so well. And so it could, you know, petitioners that, the, the school board isn't bound to support the petition, but we can all agree that we're going to have a good process. I'm happy to talk to petitioners about finding a spokesperson and doing that.
That's very good. What is, the final date is the 14th?
The 14th.
It's the 14th of January. So we will know, we will know before the budget committee's public hearing on the town budget, which is the 18th. So we will know before that if there are any petition warrant articles. And at that point, actually, nothing will be final, our entire warrant won't be final until then, because then we have, we have to determine the order, the, the school board gets to determine the order of, you know, what, the order of articles. So, so at that point, we'll know, you'll know, because we'll send it off to you.
Interestingly enough, petitions don't come labeled with who wants to speak to them.
That's true.
And so I've now been through it a couple of times where there's a petition warrant article and it's just, it's just laid out there for the voters. And again, people have the right to do it that way, but I highly encourage petitioners to. If you cared enough to put it on the ballot, you ought to care enough to communicate, you know.
Well, that happened last year and it was really clumsy, because there wasn't anybody really jumping out to speak to us.
And again, my goal is to conduct a meeting where people feel welcome to express views that aren't necessarily practically viewed. They feel that they can have their say in front of their, this is essentially a legislative session, so.
All right, and we agree with all of you, support that too. Again, I think it's nice for everyone to hear all sides. And if anything else occurs to you, don't hesitate to get in touch.
Thanks first.
If there's anything we can do, all right. Well, thank you, Charlie.
Thank you, Charlie.
It's good to get these things straightened out. But the superintendent's update.
Just a couple of things for tonight. First, I'd like to talk about the chain of communication, specifically, or we have talked in the past about, about if a parent has a concern, or it comes back to administration, and that's worked really well. Anything working really well during the budget committee with the process there? If there were any questions from the budget committee about what's going on, they went to Emily. Emily got in touch with us and then we responded back to Emily to take back. Just simply by doing it that way, and it's worked really well, we're not responding to individual budget committee members or individual board members. Everybody gets the same information at the same time. So I just want to say that worked really well and Emily did a great job at kind of being there. So thank you very much for that. One of the things that I've talked about in the past was, there's a gentleman, Jamie Volmer. In his own words, it was very much a public education. He's a business, was a businessman and was finding fault with public education and how the process was and the old adage of, you know, run it like a business. And the more he got into it and the more he learned about public education, he understood that, that businesses and public education don't operate the same, they can't operate the same. We educate every single child coming through the doors, no matter what the specific needs are. And the more he got into it, now after more than a decade, he's one of the biggest spokespeople nationwide for public education. And one of the things that he, he brings to light is the number of things that schools are charged with and the responsibilities that they're charged with. And he put together a little, and this now is about a decade old, but it gives you the idea of, you know, he showed what happened in, you know, 1900 to 1910, 1910 to 1940. You can see there were a few things added to the public education. And certainly as you moved into the 50s, science and math education were expanded and then Head Start in the 60s. And then you can see, after you reach the 80s, 90s and into the 2000s, it's just exploded. The responsibilities, the day hasn't gotten any longer, the amount of contact time that we have with children. But now everything from, you know, stranger danger to cyberbullying, to organ donors, date rape, STEM programs, race to the top, online education, I mean, it goes on and on and on. So I'm just giving these to the board members, just, it's a, it's a good read, it's an interesting read. And again, my hat's off to all of our educators who are doing on a daily basis, just doing a phenomenal job at reaching the individual needs of all of the students. So I have one of these for each of the board members. And anybody else that would like to look at it, certainly I have extras. And, and his name is Jamie Volmer, and he's got, he's got information online as well. Just a real interesting reminder to all of us, what an outstanding job our educators do on a daily basis.
And I think one of the points that some of us miss is that as that list of what educators are doing expands, so does all of the paperwork and administrative work that goes with it expand it as well, which you don't realize unless you're, do it, and when, when does that work? So I think that's amazing, it's just amazing.
It's a nice reminder for all of us.
To see it, yeah, yeah.
And that's all I'd like to touch on tonight. We've obviously had a number of other things that run the agenda, but that's it for tonight.
Okay, thank you. Any other, any questions for Bob at this point?
I'm just glad you did make us read that.
I'll hand them out so you can get a closer look at.
Principal Hartford's update now.
So I was going to touch on a couple of things, some of them might be my report, but most of them aren't. I just wanted to update you on the water testing that's been happening since, you know, last spring. And we've gone through the summer and fixed it on a nice job of, you know, step-by-step process so that we're placing everything in all of the rooms that were affected and then finding out that it didn't fix the problem and then trying something else. He's been going one room at a time, retesting, sending in the sample, waiting for the state to say, you meet the requirements or no, that you don't meet the requirements and then you'll do that room something else. So he thinks he's figured it out with, you know, the pipes and the faucets that he's used. We're down to one room that he's got to replace and get tested, and that's the room right behind you. Again, all of the rooms that are affected, kids don't drink out of those faucets, there's signs there that use for washing hands at most. But once he has all, then he's going to go through and retest all four affected areas to make sure that now that we've done everything, you know, that they're still in compliance. And then the state offers a grant to reimburse the district 50% of what we've spent. So he's had all the invoice, all that together once he's done. He just wanted to share, to make sure that you folks continue to know that he's still working on it and the state is pleased with what he's doing.
Well, that, that's excellent and, you know, good scientific approach, I think. Not, not all of us would think of, well, let's just make sure it works before we do it all, but that's, that's really good.
Let's see, community relation type things. We've had a representative from the Rollinsburg School on the Rollinsburg Garden Club. That's a longer name than that, but I can't remember what the whole thing is, but it's part of the Rollinsburg Garden Club. That was Becky Wright in the past and obviously she retired. And as she was getting ready to retire last spring, she was pulling off jobs on anybody and everybody who would volunteer for them. So our two kindergarten teachers, Katie Rando and Abby Ayers volunteered to co-represent the school and continue to be a part of the garden club. So they've been attending. A member of the garden club's been trying to, our playground committee, PTO, because part of our idea is an outside learning area where we want to integrate some ideas from the garden club out in that area for kids to use for scientific research and that type of stuff. Good relationship that we have.
Great.
The other thing is we had a program called the Foster Grandparent Program approach me. A couple of, to see if we are interested in having a volunteer foster grandparent. It's an official program out of Concord. You don't have to have been in education, you, you know, or somebody that wants to volunteer time at schools and help out kids. And we have a resident in Rollinsburg who's been doing this program for 10 years in Rochester and Milton. And recently moved to Rollinsburg about a year ago and has found that the trip up to Milton every day is a little too far. So thought, you know, let's be interested. So we have Jean Gilman coming four mornings a week, maybe all five mornings a week. So up to 20 hours a week she's volunteering in our two first and second grade classrooms. As many as she can go and she'll work with kids on, if they're in small groups for reading, if they need extra assistance with writing. Sometimes we have math in the morning and she'll have to go to where the area of need is for kids struggling with math and help out there. She started spinning right in, her, she has named herself Graham, that's what she expects all her kids to call her. So Graham is now a member of our RGS community. And then two other things, I'll bring you occasional updates from our playground committee that came last time and I've got your blessing to move forward and we had a meeting last night, but.
To continue planning, yes.
Yes.
Okay. We haven't given them permission to dig up the.
No, 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 no. Before we do any heavy duty changes, we'll come forward and expose them. So we've got a little bit of direction based off of last night's meeting and we'll get to that point. I'll be the one that comes forward and, you know, members of the playground committee who want to join, we'll do that. Some of it is things that we can do on our own anyways. The soccer goals need to be painted at some point and the nets, I hope the kids are asking for nets so they don't have to chase the ball all the way.
Well.
Don't they have goalie's wets?
And then the last thing is not on your dates, I believe, but I wanted to make you aware of that. On the evening of our next school board meeting, we have a first concert with our new music teacher. But it is before the board meeting and it's all. But it is before the board meeting and it's only about a half an hour. But I just wanted to forewarn you because I think a couple of you may have to attend that performance. And he has been made aware that a couple of you have kids who may be performing and he's going to make sure that they perform early in the program so that he could come to the board.
What time is it, Rich?
Six o'clock. So parking, if you drive and see a ton of people here, just know that it's a large area to, but it's just the van course.
And it's expected to be about a half hour program?
About a half hour program.
So we can also talk about postpartum stroke on the table. Thank you. And we will now move on to our March. We have Nicholas here who is, you know, a month old. He's a month into his 18th year-ish. All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, Nick, what do you have for us tonight?
Not a lot, considering we're coming off of a pretty long break. So we are approaching the end of the first semester. That ends officially next Friday, the 17th. And then the following Tuesday is our midterm. So we have two midterms on Tuesday, Monday and Thursday, and then the last one on Friday. And this year, for the first time on that Saturday, we had winter formal dance. It just got approved today, I guess. It should be a fun way to kind of transition to the third quarter in the last half of the year. We have our quiz show team, and they qualified for the main public television's academic contest for the fourth year in a row.
They have? Oh, that's great.
It's 16 teams, single elimination bracket, kind of just like moving up to the championship. Filming of that has started and it airs starting February on main public television. And I'm assuming it will be on the past. So I thought it would be a good watch. Winter sports have started and they're all in full swing now. So we have boys and girls hockey, basketball, wrestling, and we have cheerleading, we have a ski team, and indoor track, and also unified basketball has started back up. And as I had mentioned last meeting, I am going to try to do college acceptances. So I do have a couple. Marshall's Morocco got accepted and committed to St. Joseph's College. Haley Lawrence got accepted to the University of New England. Eli Janada's got accepted to the University of Kentucky. And I got accepted and committed to Providence College.
Congratulations. Saved himself the last.
Yeah. And that's all I have. It's difficult to get everyone, because not everyone announces all of their acceptances usually, just like the commitments. So I'm trying my best to keep up with everyone, but this is what I have confirmed so far. So I'm going to just keep adding to this list month by month and then hopefully it will grow some months.
That's very nice. And we do appreciate it. It's nice knowing where, just that folks are going. If they don't want to give their name, if you just want to say, you know, in Rollinsford, Rollinsford. If they don't want to give their name or make it public, they don't have to. But that's pretty nice. And congratulations on all of this.
Thank you. That's all I have for this month.
All right, thank you very much.
All right.
You're welcome to stay.
Can I ask one question?
Oh, yeah.
Have you played a major?
Well, it was science. And then hopefully law school after that.
Wow, very nice.
Any other questions for Nick?
No, no worries. I'm always curious.
We'll put them on my table.
And is any of this contingent on how you finish out your year or are you now like done?
As long as this guy gets turned, I'll be all set. So I hope I don't lose it on the way to my car.
That's great. Nick, well, we'll afford to see you next month. You're in the list, girl. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, we're moving on to the financial update. So this is, so the current year's budget.
Your packet. At this point, we've encumbered all of ours Marshwood tuition. So since the last update, special ed was encumbered. Nancy went through it all and, you know, verified everything. So we do have a savings per Marshwood special ed in about $38,000. However, she also students that are placed out of district. And so in that area, we are over budget $17,000. So in that, it's still a $25,000 situation. They are working on transportation still. I noticed when I was doing that, so they are working for the next report. That will be encumbered as well because along with out of district kids also comes the transportation to Long Island. So as far as revenue, we did receive our first payments for adequacy and also a little over $1,000 bucks from the state for our special ed students that attend charter schools. Every year we get a little for that. So that's coming in as unanticipated revenue for this year. And then I just added at the bottom that that transfer was made to the trust funds for the $97,000. And I updated the totals in there for you. So that has been completed.
All right, any questions on the current year's budget?
Yeah, I have a question on the technology lines, new equipment and placement equipment. We have a lot left behind those. Is that something you'd like to maybe address with us? So will it be spent? Yes, what's-
Some of it, yes. Yeah, I think what we did like until the budget was voted on, because we could continue to purchase ahead of.
Got it, okay. So we may end up with some savings.
Usually the budget, after we get into February and certainly March, we get a real clear handle on what we're going to have left. And then we can have more expectations about that. We try to be a little bit conservative until we get to the February, March time. And then we can come back to the board and suggest some other avenues to get ahead.
And we have the remaining funds in tuition to the LEAs. Is that a contingency mostly?
And the enrollment has gone down. If you notice in your enrollment, you did notice. You've gone down for some students as well as some we had were special ed and are no longer here. So that's a layer because they have the base tuition as well as some services. So of the contingency students plus the, you know, you had a drop of two.
I think we're actually, I don't remember, but I looked back a year and we're about, we're about where we were a year ago on this because as Dr. Gant said, we don't know much more until we get there. But it's good to keep up with what's happening. I did see the drop in two students at Marshwood, so people must have moved or something. So it's a difference. All right, any other questions on the budget or on the current year's budget? All right, then we'll move on to our, to the budget presentation to discuss and discuss it. Katie, I know, worked on the presentation, I believe. And pass something out here that I picked up too, just for information for us up here. Information from the state. A year ago in 2018, 2018, Rollinsford, out of all of the municipalities in Stratford, Rollinsford was the fifth highest for local education cost, fifth highest. So there were four municipalities that were higher, eight that were lower. This year, we are the seventh highest. We are right in the middle. There are six higher and six lower. So our costs compared to the other municipalities in Stratford County, you know, dropped in that comparison. So you can see, I got, tried to get some of this information. There's a few more of them. I thought it was very interesting information that it shows it's not a bad place at this time. And just, I have to, you know, give credit to our administrators for, including the, and the school for doing this hard work of trying to keep us where, in sort of a good place. I think right in the middle is a really good place. So this is the latest final information. It is, the tax year that just ended in our December tax bill is what we're, is 2019. So that's, that shows that that's... And so in 2019, only Farmington had a lower tax rate overall. That's everything, town, everything. And that was only by 37 cents, that's Farmington. And only Madbury had a lower valuation, which is what your taxes are based on. I know this can get a little bit confusing. But their local education costs were $7 higher than ours. So I thought that was interesting. And population wise, of the closest we are are New Durham and Madbury. Small community, I think, I think we're doing a very good job all together, trying to keep, trying to get us to where we want to be and keeping us there. So share that information because I think, I think it's really good information to have, to see where we stand.
It is, and especially comparing us to some of these communities that have much higher populations.
Yes.
And we're still, you know, coming out kind of in the middle. That's really amazing.
Yeah, I had some, there were some surprises to me on this, but, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean Dover has a relatively low local education, but its tax rate, but its overall tax rate is higher. So their citizens are paying for, while they're not paying quite as much as we are for their local education, they're paying more for other things, the full-time fire departments, you know, these all those things, the roads and everything. But it's just very interesting to see that.
Yeah.
And it's good to let, it's good for all of us to know it, but, so that's a starting point that we have. And things that we might want to have sort of, sort of in the back of our minds as we talk to community members to ask questions about, you know, how come we're not doing, how come we aren't as low as, you know, I don't know, but why isn't our local education as low as Dover? Well, you know, we're paying less than $2 more, but your overall tax rate was lower too, so. All right, so now on to the full presentation that is last year's, is a model. Yep. Have folks had a chance to look through it? So one of the things we know is now is that the moderator will be reading the full warrant article. I think we did sort of forego that last year, but, so that's good.
You have to do it in here.
Oh.
I already read it.
I think there's a good job here showing the increases and decreases and where they are. I know that last year I had a, this is, this is the place to go into this much detail, I think. So, you know, I, what do other people feel about it?
Yeah, a one thing, and I missed it, I apologize. I find it's good to know, and maybe not a slide, just so that we can have it in our minds, what percentage of operating budget is contracted.
There is, there, that list is, what is, what is in the default budget essentially? There's, is that on a slide?
Well, it's, there's a slide on the default, like what we would say if the default budget was passed.
So in essence, that's the list of what-
But I can give you, I always feel like it's, you know, you're like, yeah, but we don't have control.
Oh, I see. Yeah, I know what you're talking about.
I actually have within my Excel spreadsheet, a graph that shows that.
That pie chart that we've seen before. I think that would be good to have. Good one.
Oh, yes, okay.
And I think as a slide, I think that would be a good thing to have a slide up to three. So they can point to it, yeah.
It's just, I feel like, you know, a lot of people don't understand that the budget is like $200,000 for a year, you know?
Or that if we do, what it affects. Or not if we do it, but if someone else chooses to do it, what it affects, yeah.
Just identifying those things as contractual obligations.
Yeah, the, it usually shows like what percentage of salaries and benefits, what is, you know, transportation or components and all the other like supply.
Yeah.
So I can add that up here.
You've been working with the budget committee, so you know, you know, more of what might be helpful for them to see and for the public to see.
Yeah. Yeah, that was the only thing that I was interested in seeing.
I was much on the SAU withdrawal. So when I was modeling it after last year's, we had a lot of slides in there last year about the withdrawal process and a few extras. So I didn't, you know, obviously I took those out, but I didn't know if there was any slides you wanted to put in with details on the withdrawal at that, you know, or is it just something you're going to talk about without slides?
Thanks, Katie. And I kind of briefly discussed was not including all of that and kind of muddying the slides, but certainly talking about it in depth, whether it's the, whether it's the withdrawal or if you choose to put the grade six on, it's kind of the same thing. Instead of doing multiple slides to kind of muddy the water, certainly getting all that information out in the presentation.
But it's like more of a session for each one.
Well, in here, you've got, you've got the start of them listed.
You've just got the warrant article language.
So we were planning on just presenting, unless you want to change it, presenting the warrant article and speaking in depth about the numbers and facts and all sorts of things.
And I think that's good. And I think we have, we have a wonderful presentation, and I don't know if it needs to be edited, the one that was done for the withdrawal that we did during the public hearing for the withdrawal.
We could also put that, I mean, I'm going to have copies of this presentation as well as I have prepared a budget packet to put out. We could put those power points as like a handout instead of making it a slide.
So if we could get that tweet, are you able to bring it kind of up to date?
Yeah.
By Saturday?
Or tomorrow if I need-
I mean, tomorrow.
Saturday's hockey, so tomorrow's slide.
Anytime before tomorrow morning would be fine.
I'll just take the page out. There's a timeline slide that just needs to be updated, but I think fundamentally everything else is okay.
And even if you have a timeline, you just kind of bold where we are, you know, we're at the vote. Okay, we're here to vote on it now.
So we could put all of that information-
Yeah, if I could leave you my email maybe and you could just shoot me an email with it, I can make copies tomorrow at the office.
And we'll talk, we'll talk a little bit about how many copies. Yeah, we'll talk later about that. And in terms of the sixth grade, I would say that's fine, but we're just discussion.
Do you don't think that we should have? I didn't know if you wanted, yeah, like the summary of the costs or-
Oh, I see, yes.
I think that would be helpful. You want a slide?
Yes.
Do you want that as a slide or do you want any information to hand out?
What do you feel is best, Ellen?
I feel like a-
Well, if it's a slide, it will be handed out. If it's a slide, it will be handed out.
I feel like it's a slide, so when we're talking about it, people can be looking at it.
Do you want just that summary page that says tuition?
Transportation, tuition.
Yeah, for the total.
All on one slide.
All on one slide.
Yeah.
Since a lot of lawyers throw out-
It's an opportunity to talk about it.
You were saying not to have that slide? Because-
It's an opportunity to talk about it.
You'd prefer to talk rather than have the slide up?
So it can't be the vote.
Well, I suppose we can.
Yeah, I am going to put it online too. So for people who aren't sitting there listening to the discussion, it might be helpful to see the breakout.
Well, I just think it would be helpful for people to see how we-
As long as it's all broken down and it's just- As long as it's well approached, and it's just, for, for, it is what it is.
Yeah, we can break out the seminar.
Yeah, because otherwise they're looking at a total number and then, you know, this puts the understanding behind those numbers.
Will there be an area on these indicating what we are supporting or not supporting?
Yes, after we, after we, if we want to, go through, go ahead.
I think that comes at our presentation, we do it deliberative, because recommended until after this presentation by the budget committee.
Right, the budget committee will be doing their recommendations right after the presentation. We, I, I thought that we might be deciding that ourselves this evening, what we would have, so that the budget committee will also know what we are supporting.
That's probably true.
Very good.
Now, we're, we're not able to do the all yet, because we'll have non-budget bargaining agreement, and then we'll come out of that non-public to, to take the vote on that, but,
Yeah. So do we want? Do you want me to add that then, once you decide what you're recommending? Am I adding that to this presentation?
And that's, and that's a question, I mean, we're going to know, but do we want Katie to add them at this point, or for Saturday's meeting?
Whether the board recommends, we certainly could. And then, I mean, your point's well taken, but that then the budget committee would know whether the board supports or not.
And also people are in the, I'm.
Right.
Are we gonna, I mean, I guess, you know, anything the budget committee is going to say or do that will change our minds after the meeting?
Yes, it could be, that's true, excellent question.
You could also revote though, because you, if there are any changes that the budget committee might recommend, you're going to have a meeting directly after that meeting, so if you want to adjust any of your votes at that point, you certainly could.
So does it, so i- i- if there's any chance that we might change a vote, I mean, I don't know, is it more confusing not to put it on until afterwards, until after?
You didn't put it on last year, because this is the exact template of last year's.
So it wasn't for the, it wasn't on the budget committees.
It wasn't on, it been on the one we presented at the deliberative.
Yes, on the deliberative, yeah.
So either way, I would be saying, it's outside the bounds.
And hearing what the public says too may change your mind on what you recommend as well.
That's true, as a matter of fact, we might even want to put it at, what? Even though, because this isn't an official warrant, we could say, you know, yeah, yeah, you know, going, going into the public hearing, school board recommends, you know, we could actually. Maybe we wait.
Be pretty clear what, what we support or what we don't.
And we can even say it out loud, because we can discuss it, we can discuss it tonight and have an idea, and then, so that we're speaking. I think the budget committee should know what we're feeling, and it's, so I think we should know so that Emily can present it in the meeting afterwards.
Can you do that?
I think that, I think that's very important, that we decide, and Emily can then do it in the actual meeting where they're talking.
Oh, I just thought we would, my, my thought process was this is an opportunity to cover here as well, both that are going to be attendance, so.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I'm not, I don't think it's bad to say what, what, what we think, what, what we think going in, what our recommendation is going in. So we'll, we'll come up with the right wording and good question. But, but, Emily, do you have a chance to look at this relatively, any other questions now?
Just, just one thing about the, the Article Six.
Yeah, we haven't done that yet.
Contract, that is ratified tonight by the board, then that will be all set. I haven't heard back from the union, I'll, I'll spread for them tomorrow.
Okay.
And if it's ratified by them, then we can put it in, if not, we're not going to be.
No, we can't put it in, right, correct. Correct, and, and they, and it will be until the 14th, it won't be, might not be available until the 14th.
Correct.
Okay, at which point, we could probably still present it at the town budget, the town budget hearing. Yeah, would we have to have a separate meeting? Would, would we have to have a separate school, do we have to have a hearing on the, a public hearing on the, oh, would the budget committee have to have a, that's a legal question? If, if we, if we haven't heard from the union tomorrow?
Yeah, I can tie that up.
Okay, thank you, because, well, we'll have to see, because if, if it's, if we don't know, or if it's not ratified, I mean, we have to know, are they the same? If we don't know if they're not, does it mean like if we don't go forward with it, period? It's not, it's not meeting that, thank you. Good question. Anything else on the?
Why does it get so confusing?
It's great.
That's the way it is.
Anything else on next year's budget? Right, now this comes to mind, I mean, we are, we will be talking about the collective bargaining agreement and all public coming out and, and taking our vote on that, so I think that's the only other thing. Okay.
Did you want to talk about copy numbers now, or? How many copies do you want me to make?
So for, for Saturday, I would say let's not go crazy. What did we have last year, about 40 people?
I had a lot left over.
Yeah, a lot left over, I think a hundred.
I think you took some, I believe, to the town, dropped them off, and left some here, I think.
And some to the library, so I mean, certainly.
And I can bring them again to the deliberative, you know, but, although we'll have another presentation for that.
Yeah, I certainly wouldn't do any, I'd do 40, right, that's what Tom's saying. What do other people think? It's, it's, it's a, I hate to see those stacks of paper.
I know, okay.
Forty now, that's too many.
Is too many?
Ours wasn't on a Saturday last year.
Yes, it was. The committee public hearing is al- always on the Saturday. I know. But I think we had about the same for public hearing. Public hearing might be less, what, 30, you would compromise at 30?
Yeah, let's go with 30.
Just give them a little card with the link.
And I will post it online tomorrow, so it's there.
And we can, there's a board, there's a whiteboard there, we can put the link up where they can go find it.
On the screen.
It is going to be on the screen.
People want to find it afterwards, they can always, if they can't find it.
I also did a copy of, a packet of the budget, I'm going to make copies of it for you guys to look at, it's all the same information, it's just, you know, we always put a copy of the budget out as well.
That is true. I'm sorry, I'm keeping them all.
So this is the same. It's the same one.
Okay.
This is just a packet that I'm going to hand out. I just want to look at them and make sure that you don't want any other information in there. It's the same we did last year.
Well, except for the little pie chart.
Yes, I can add that.
Little pie chart.
Well, it's going to be, that's going to be in the presentation.
That's going to be in the presentation, okay. Okay. Covers and highlights. Everyone's pagey, definitely.
It's the same sentence, it's the, the, the memo with the highlights, it's the three different budgets, the total with the elementary.
Emily's looking for her favorite line.
It's the revenue.
It's nice, okay, I think that's very nice.
Could you organize my list, please?
And printing and color, I stop printing and coloring at home.
I got rid of my printer.
Oh, that's smart.
Oh, Lord, that's smart.
So I'll do 30 copies of those as well. Those can always be reused too for the deliberative, you know.
Right, right, as long as there's no, they can go through and hand off. You know, right, all right, so we're sort of moving into the deliberative session discussion now, and we've had a little discussion already, so there's going to be some checking on childcare. Anything else we decided on? And what, and the adult in the room kind of thing is going to look into. So, so we shift, we shift us to the deliberative now, so because this is, except for Saturday, this is our last meeting before the deliberative session, we'll talk about how we're going to get the word out on things, and that's part of what Jen is here to, or what the withdrawal committee might be able to do as well, so.
Sharing our board article, do you, do we not decide whether we're going to put this to grade six?
Is that now?
Oh, okay, yeah, let's go back. All right. Thank you, Emily. All right, so we're going back to grade six, we're looking at what now is Article 10, we don't know, it'll remain that, it might be different article. This year for Allensford, school district will raise an appropriate 300, you know, $326,000 to support the first year of sending grade six students to Marshwood to school. At middle school, starting 2021, every year thereafter, the appropriate amount will be placed in the operating budget. I know, Tom, that you're, you're very interested in having it on, so that the information gets on. Other folks?
I agree with Tom, that we need to get the information out and have a vote on it, but I can't in good conscience talk about sending this year's fifth graders to middle school next year and telling them that in March, so they essentially have three months left to be prepared to make that transition. I don't, to the parents, to the staff here at the grade school, who would have to sort of shift gears to help prepare them. But I don't know the logistics of, you know, having a vote now for a year in the future. I don't know if that's even possible, but that worries me a lot.
Those two things too, the cost will clearly be different, so the dollar amount will almost be void.
Yeah, I think that's a really good point.
Yeah. I'm providing an estimate, because the number of students really could change, or cost of tuition could change. This is the best estimate at this time, with the information that we have.
Yeah, I mean, I would imagine that it's, it's a ballpark figure, it would change for sure, but not probably by a grand or something.
Could we, I mean, are you, are you considering whether we should change the year to not 2020, the 21, but to 2021, to 22, school year?
I'm not sure you could do that with the dollar amount in there though, because you wouldn't want to add $326,000 to your budget for next year if you're not planning on sending it to you next year, so.
And I'm not sure that you can, I'm trying to think of the wording, if we were sure that you could commit something like, with the appropriate corresponding figure to be put into the 21, 22 budget.
You can't commit.
I don't know how.
But then what happens if that follow the dollar amount where an article fails? Or do you automatically just put it in the budget?
I think if it passed, it would automatically. I don't know.
And you make that decision on a future year.
That would be more confusing.
It does get more confusing. I, I, I completely agree that it's, it's, it's too abrupt. It's too abrupt, and that, and that, I, I believe, I, I know that my position would be to say that the school board does not recommend, that, that we would not want this done this year.
Yeah.
And, but we can't, we can't predict what the public will do.
Right.
And, and so that if they say yes, that then we're left with, with the kids, the staff, the parents are all left with three months to scramble.
Was it done that way, with the high, what were you?
There was so much talk.
Put it on in March, and then we needed the.
Or was it a year lapse? There was so much talk though, years, for, there was, there was the decision, there were things done, and then by the, on the warrant article, it was the next year, but it, but, but.
Was it the following September? I don't remember being that.
And remember, and remember we were phasing kids, everybody had to go.
Right.
But every sixth grader knew that he or she was going to go to middle school next year.
Somewhere, right.
Yes, they had to go somewhere.
To see the summer's worth, yeah.
They were moving regardless.
Staying in this building.
And the decision was made long, long enough in advance, so it was simply a matter of, it was simply a matter of the contract being.
I just can't remember if that was the dollar amount in there as well, or it was just that they're going.
There was no dollar amount, there were no dollar amounts attached.
Probably because we didn't know, really, because it was an a la carte situation, right? Right, it was just.
And you already had summer's worth tuition built into your budget.
Right, yeah. So we have that chunk, and then they were relatively close, and you, with the lower paid tuition, plus the a la carte.
Because we, we, we were voting on the contract to send our students, and we could vote on that a year ahead, because the contract took effect, not, not the fall, not, not there, but the following. I believe that's how it went, right? Because the contract didn't take, and we were voting on the contract, yeah. I think that's how it went. And then the, the contract had the formula in it, but not the exact amount. So, that's a very good.
I think that you would, I'm trying to think this through, I, I think that you would be able to put in a warrant article that would guide the board to students during the 21, 22 student, uh, school year to Marshwood, and the appropriate amount would be budgeted into that budget. So obviously, you're not putting a number on the warrant article, but the warrant article itself is basically saying that you will fill that each year.
But I think the town guys need to know.
I think it's very important to know the cost, because it's the, it's the cost that I, that I would be objective to.
Right, that, that's going to make that very difficult to get accurate information out and have people, I mean, that's kind of what happened last year.
Plus, any dollar amount you put on, you know, gets added to your budget, so you wouldn't want to do that for next year, you're not sending them until the following year.
Right, it's going to be, no, I'm just saying that, that you would put that into your budget for 21, 22. The, the 326 would not.
Yeah.
And then, and then we're in the situation of, of the petition warrant article last year that just said, you'll get a. And looking at something, how would you do it? But, um, this is tough.
And I, I was very surprised that folks didn't quite understand the math that was involved in sending students, so that really kind of surprised me, because, you know, in our other discussions, I was really, you know, people are going to see this, and they're going to be able to make a solid, mindful decision, and.
The question is around.
Budget, yes. So I, I left there, this, this part.
Well, I think that that's one of the.
Because it was applied very simple, well, almost a deduction, well, if you send them here, you don't need this, but the fact is, many of the things here don't change, cost wise, and you have the addition of costs, you know, us in, all of that other stuff, that it's kind of hard to explain, because it's not, you know, comes out of here, goes over there, because if it was that easy, you know, the dollars wouldn't be here.
That's why the summary sheet is really.
That's why, it isn't put that out, and it is difficult to explain, but if you, you live in a, you live in a house with two parents and three children, and the eldest decides to join the service at 18, your household expenses are not cut by one-fifth. You know, they're not cut by one-fifth, you still have to pay for the house, you still have to, you still have to, you know, do all the things that have to be done.
That's big.
What, the food? The food, oh, oh, you do say the food, on an 18-year-old, but still. But, I mean, it's, it's, yeah, you still have the same expenses. But, I mean, it's, it's, yeah, you still have the same expenses.
We said we would negate this. We did. We said we would have our meeting, our forum. We did. As I said last time, I don't think there's any reason why we need to delay this. If this thing is voted, it's voted for. If it's voted down, we're done. It's really that simple. We're done. I mean, $326,000. This town wouldn't vote for a fire truck, which we would consider, you know, unassessive. I'm really struggling to see why they'll vote for this. This is a lot of money. This isn't 70, this is 326,000.
Annually.
Annually. It's not going away. It's not a one-time cost.
It's getting bigger.
Yeah. And every year, costs are going to change. And we're talking about, you know, a population in our school that will be increasing. So that means every year that number is going to reflect that, whatever is going to.
Does it only have the savings on the staff reduction in one year? On one year, you don't have that savings.
Which are shown in the.
And frankly, you know, after the forum, you know, I understood what some of the questions were, but at the end of the day, there was also, you know, the discussions of the things that were offered. And then some of the things, you know, later weren't necessarily as, like some of the squats on rings, sixth graders. That was a huge argument. And then to find out, but well, they're not necessarily offered to the sixth graders. That's a big thing. And as I said, you know, if we're serious about, you know, addressing this, then this, you know, should be an opportunity for us as a board to say, what can we change here for the sixth grade? What can we do? What were the takeaways from that forum, from the discussion that we can, we can bring, you know, to fruition? I mean, everything is going to cost money one way or another, but 326,000 dollars a year. Oh, man.
So, Tom, what I hear you saying is that you, your preference still is to put this on with school board does not recommend.
I'm saying we need to bring this to the public. What we're going to say as part of what we support, I think we have plenty of offerings here. So to be frank with you, I'm saying we need to do the responsible thing, which is to bring this before the town and let them vote on it. It's going to be yes or no. The dollars are going to be what drives this. The quality of education, I would argue, we can provide here. I don't think there's an argument about that.
No.
We don't have a seventh grade, so we need to send our, our sixth graders somewhere when they're done. But we have a sixth grade here. We heard what folks said at the forum. But what wasn't clear at the time, when the, when that original warrant came on, which was completely advisory, was the cost. Nobody, you know, I would love a new car, unless I know what it costs, you know, that conversation's not, so it's the same thing here. You can have a lot of folks in town, I haven't had kids in this school since the Reagan administration going, $326,000, what is this going to mean for me tax-wise? We hear it every year and we have cut our budget to the point. So this is, this is a big deal.
So how, so, but I certainly support Erin's comments about, there's a very short period of time, but that's already, well, it isn't really. It's a very, should, should it pass? That's a very short period of time.
You're rolling the dice.
I don't disagree with Tom. I think we should put it on, but I think it's.
I believe that we don't put it on, then we won't. There will be a warrant, and it'll be one way or another.
Well, consensus?
I would show the line. Agree?
All right. Then it goes on with school board does not recommend. And I think that's something we have to make very clear to the budget committee. So that's why I think we should go on.
Yeah, doesn't hurt.
Because I think the budget committee needs to know where we're coming from on this.
Are we talking facts and that?
Yeah, there, yes, that will be, Katie has those four, so I think we'll be discussing them. Do we want, do we want them now?
Yeah.
Why don't we get them? We're discussing warrants ourselves, why don't we? Right. All right. Right. That's correct. Let's discuss them at the very end of our meeting after we've had non-public, so, because we have to decide if we're ratifying the.
And that's on here.
So we don't want to have that discussion until we know what we're doing with that.
Wow, though, is it $1.11.
$1.11?
For the sixth grade. Do you want me to just do the ones that I can?
Sure.
So the operating budget is six cents. $1.11 for the sixth grade and then 51 cents for our decrease of revenue.
Doesn't that go in the budget? Isn't that part of the budget? Oh, yeah.
It increases the stuff, so we're not getting the revenue, we're not getting much.
Right, so the budget goes up six cents and then plus 51.
51. So it's 57 for the operating budget and then the revenue and then $1.11 for the third space.
And those are the only ones, except for the collective bargaining agreement that have, that have money involved. Right. Thank you. Okay. So is that one of those dollars or? Thank you. Okay, I think I was going to do it. Okay. We can come back, but we're not done, obviously, we've been on all discussions.
So are you, are you going to recommend or not recommend? So we should do that now so that I can add it to the slide if you do want that.
Yep. So I think we can do, we'll do it by consensus at this point, no formal voting. We can do that if we need to, after the next time around. So on the budget, knowing that it is a 57 cent increase in the budget and Emily, there was no pushback at the budget committee meeting when this was all presented, correct? I mean, is there anything that you think we should know that the budget committee has to say?
No, I don't think so, no.
Okay.
Have they ever?
I guess. I guess, I guess they have.
No, no, during the meeting? Yeah, but I don't, often times, right now, class, we don't have to say. I don't, I don't, that's the case right now.
I believe they have to say that they need to know, the school district needs to know they're going in, they can't get blindsided by it, not that.
I would say we recommend article five.
Yeah. I, consensus, I agree.
Yes.
Okay, so it's a yes.
We'll get back to six, yeah. Seven.
Seven, we don't know, no, six, we don't know, seven.
I would say revenue.
Yes. Well, no amount by taxation for seven, so it's an obvious yes. Right?
Right, yeah. Same with eight.
Same with eight, yes. Everyone in agreement? Again, no taxation.
Nine is withdrawal.
Nine's withdrawal, definite yes.
And not recommend that.
What?
I think just to.
Yes. And no on 10.
And then I'll add them to the ones, right, final.
Consensus, add them to the slide.
And since we're putting these together, is that the order that you would like them in as well? As well ordered out?
This, this order, I, until we, no, petition warrant. Is that, any thoughts on that? This has been such, the order that has always gone in, up to, you know, up to the withdrawal and the, you know, up to the two that don't, that are new. And we did put tuition ahead of, so the other thing is, do we put tuition ahead of capital reserve for the building?
I mean, we're getting out of there.
Yeah. Okay. All right then. So back to, now, back to my Jen is here, which is sort of a deliberative session discussion in a sense, and now we're jumping ahead of the deliberative discussion, which is getting, getting the word out and communicating and all those sorts of things. Now, Jen, you have the withdrawal committee together again, but one last time or a couple last times?
Yes, we, we were waiting for the Department of Education to have a table to come back, which is, it's a thank you. So our next step is to get back together, determine based on the warrant article language, familiarize, as well as provide some of the background information that helped us get to where we are today. So we have some kind of, we have some question, FAQs, some quick questions and answers. We have a more detailed deck, so I'll get this over to you. But then we probably need something in the middle and we also all agree as a group that we wanted to hit social media and we wanted to be available in public. So want to get the group back together, talk about how we might approach social media. We do a Facebook page, we've got the website, we've got the town page, so there's lots of different ways to, so if you're an author, you can do a video.
I was hoping you forgot.
One thing I remember. So we did talk about that as well as I'd like to see us have some kind of open coffee or evening tea or something, open forum at the library so people could just come in and ask questions if they wanted to. We may or may not get attendance at something like that, but we have tried to have our meetings away from the schools so that people who aren't completely used to coming into the school, because it is for the whole town to vote. We want to make sure that it's not just the school article, but it's the town article that we're voting on and get the news out. We also talked about doing a mail art, giving a little bit of money left in our budget to do a mail art, so I have to pull that together. It'd be, from a timing perspective, I just need to get my calendar straight, but that'd be for the budget, for the ballot.
Yes, so for, well, yes, so the deliberative session, for the deliberative session, which is the fourth?
Yep.
Is it four? And then the voting.
Somewhere between there, we'll all be voting on primary too, so.
It's a, this is a third round here.
Yeah, so we'll probably do the mail art between the deliberative session and the vote.
Yes.
So we have some stuff to ramp up in the next, probably a week or so to get ready for the fourth, offer something probably really close to that. I don't think we'll get any things for October or something tomorrow. And then we'll, we'll ramp up again.
That sounds good.
Use colored paper for it now. Absolutely, it sticks out.
Gray color.
We'll pick the right color.
We'll find the right color.
Real straight.
That's fine.
So we can bring that back through, obviously with Erin and Judy on the committee for the approval process for that now.
Well, there won't be, it'll be the withdrawal committee approving it, not, not the school board. We're not meeting again anyway. We're doing all this discussion now because the timing is that we're not meeting again until after that, so that's why we're, so appreciate your coming in tonight to discuss it. But any, any thoughts from the board or?
No, this is good. Yeah, that's really, that's a great plan.
It's really going to be very helpful.
You're going to get as many people as you can. I mean, and they're going to tell others, like, hope comes and they'll be ready.
It's just, it's confusing. I mean, you got some feedback, people did see the online, the presentation online and it's, I mean, it took us a good four months to figure out what we were doing before we started, you know, getting. Expect that you can bring people up to speed, the elevator conversation is kind of naive, so do your best.
It is, but I mean, obviously it's like, but when we're here.
Right.
And if we don't vote for it, Summersworth is ready to reinstitute their withdrawal committee. And that's something we need to remember to be able to tell people. They're ready to reinstitute and withdraw, so.
And we're going to get the same services and it's about the same cost.
Right.
I think those are the, the big ideas that.
The same services at the same formula. I think if we say the same formula, if we can guarantee the same cost, but if we say the same formula, please don't.
And you don't have any concern with the contract and how that, the preliminary contract?
No, it's already, it's already been signed by both, both school boards. So it is, it is, it is ready to go based on whether or not it was, how the withdrawal vote goes.
Right, so it'll be seamless.
Yes. It will be absolutely seamless and, and of course, the key there is, what is it, free fits?
Yes.
I need, we need, we need 60% to. Guys are out in, sort of out in the cold.
Starting shaking hands with 50.
There you go. Thank you, Jen.
There are seven of us, right?
Thank you, Jen. Is there anything else that you want to share, anything else the board wants to?
Thank you.
Thank you. Really, well, we appreciate it. All right, next up is new business, the water district communication correspondence.
Can you pack it? You've got the, the letter of concern and inquiry, then also the responses that we got back about the, about the water commission.
All right, so what we know is that we can't have a vote, a vote, even though we're big users of the water, we don't have a vote because we're not a resident, a resident in the water district. So, so what can we as a board do, and maybe this is the next correspondence then, the direct vote to the next correspondence, is what can we as a board do to make sure that we're, that the, that Argus, that is, is fully informed of what's going on in a timely manner and can stay involved with some of these things? I mean, that's sort of my concern at this point, not the rest of it, but.
Well, it sounds like Tom or I could attend some of the meetings. Is that proxy?
Who that is.
To the meetings? But, yeah, I think that the, the main thing is being informed about things ahead of time that might affect the school, so I maybe not.
The interesting thing about this correspondence is this sentence. There are two members of the school board or voters of the district who, our names, and they are certainly welcome as individuals to voice their concern meeting. The irony of that is how many times have we been to those public meetings where they didn't allow any public discussion? No matter what the issue, given people who had questions regarding killing, nothing. They would allow no comment. So that, that is a concern, so.
And that's why, and that's why I think it's important that maybe we make a slightly different request, not that the board to always attend and report back to someone, to Rich, to Bob, to me, if we're doing something in the next day or the next week, but that we have some sort of formal, we have some sort of formal communication with the water district. So, so that we don't have, so that we don't have to be responsible for sending someone to the meetings. I mean, I think.
Does the school get notifications that everyone in the water district gets?
I don't know.
Like, oh, there's a meeting coming up or notifications?
Do you get those?
I don't think so.
Just the, all right, so the water district doesn't get them, so apparently the school doesn't have them.
I don't know, I mean, you're talking about correspondence, about anything, or just no.
Sometimes there'll be a letter.
Yeah, but does the school have a?
Where minutes are available.
When they, they were going to increase the rates, they sent down a letter.
The budget committee, they sent.
Does the school get that type of a notification?
It comes with the call. Do you know, Rich? Oh, does it come with a bill or you don't?
The bill is a little postcard.
I'm not sure we've seen any other correspondence.
Oh, if the rate is going to increase until, I mean, you get the new.
All the phone letters.
I guess the question I have is what exactly are we asking them for?
Well, I guess I'm going to ask our administrators and sort of put Rich in, on the spot perhaps, but what would be important to know in a, in a really timely manner? But there are things, for instance, the big work that's coming up on Willie Street is going to affect the school regardless of when it's done. So, and I don't know, I guess, how do we ask the water district to make sure that, that the school is informed and planning for things that have to happen?
Well, I mean, I suppose based on Erin's dissertation here, we can, one of us can technically, I'm with the school board and I'm also a member of the water district, and we would like to be assured we're going to be given ample notice of any shut offs, changes, tests, anything like that, especially how the. tests, anything like that, especially having to do with the upcoming work.
But wouldn't it, and then just, wouldn't it be better if that was a formal relationship between the administration, either in this building or you, rather than committing one of you to the meetings and say that? The response and writing, what do you think about?
Are there minutes posted? Do they have minutes?
There are recordings of the meetings, I don't know if somebody's actually taking minutes.
I think there are minutes.
I mean, I could submit a letter requesting any kind of minutes or any kind of, you know, advance notice for when they're doing the work or rate changes or anything like that. I'm not sure that, you know, they've made it pretty clear that they're not gonna be allowing us to be part of that.
Right, but they did, in the last, in the last meeting that I attended, which was probably not the last meeting, but having all the residents affected by the work on Willie Street being part of the planning of how it's gonna go, that's very nice, but the school is the biggest area affected. And if the road gets closed down, if they close down our parking lot, which is what they were talking about doing, it makes a big difference to us. And it's more that kind of...
So presumably, if they were going to include others in the planning of this, they were going to reach out to them some way. So maybe the ask is just reach out to us, just like you would any other user of your services when you were going to do something that affects us.
I can put that into a request for information, a request for any kind of rate changes and also a request to involve as much as possible of work that might be done, or I can put that in a request to do a kind of responding.
And they'll have the contact for that, so they'll know who.
Right. And I can also ask if there are any formal minutes or anything and where I can access those too, because we can keep track of those after everything.
Well, I can assure you, and I'm sure Jen would back me up, they are very quick in responding to requests for information.
Well, this isn't, this isn't actually a formal request for information.
No, no, but if you're asking for minutes, you know, don't be surprised if it takes, you know, an unfortunate amount of time to get anything. Unfortunately, I don't have a lot of faith, having witnessed these meetings, it's just the behavior is sometimes bizarre. People, they are asking questions, and your question regarding upcoming instruction to have, you know, the willingness on the part of the commission to actually take the question no matter what it is. And I think that, you know, my recommendation would be to the commission, I don't know who you'd see, see in town, unfortunately, I don't believe the select board has any real jurisdiction.
Well, I think at this point, we're just trying to establish this relationship, and I think at this point, they did respond to...
But they're telling you, but, hear me out, they're telling you that the only people that can talk at these meetings, if they allow it, are people on the school board who live in the district. So if you had no one that lived in the district, you wouldn't have the opportunity to speak, and I think that's outrageous.
And you made it very clear that you're to speak as individual residents, not as members of this board.
Exactly. This is, you know, it's just one more example.
Well, yes, and I think, but let's not make, let's not make problems before, for ourselves, I mean, yes.
But what I'm telling you is that you're, they're only, the only venue, the only avenue you're gonna have is to have people that actually live in the district. How that necessarily appropriate, because your whole, your school is in the district, so that shouldn't even be a concern.
And that's why I think a request to, will be things that affect the school in a timely manner is really the next step then, to see how it goes.
I think it is.
I mean, if there's not much else, I think, I think. Thank you. A shot, okay, we're shot. Okay. All right, now the wellness policy review. So the wellness policy that we approved, that's what it's called, right? Yes, we approved these calls. So, so one of the things we have to do is to convene, the district convene a representative wellness committee that will meet at least four times a year. So my question is, I guess to Bob, is to, when do we have to convene this committee to sort of, because that's the first step.
Yeah, I think that it would be reasonable to establish a committee so they can start that process.
All right.
And we establish a committee.
All right, so, so, this is from the school itself, this is how it's comprised of, I'm reading directly from the policy. So that's two people, and it could be, and they recommend things like a building administrator or staff, like a nurse, counselor, regular ed, health or physical education teacher. That's their recommendation, so two of those types of people. At the community member, and I put a question, so I'm, it might be really good to work with the PTO, and if we could get like a PTO rep, there we've got a parent and a, you know...
So we had someone reach out recently, she's also, that might be a good...
Okay, good, so I'm thinking that, so maybe a PTO member there. And then at least one rep from the district's food service contracted provider, I believe we have one person, right? Isn't it just Jenny?
Well, we also have a food service director that works for Cafe Services, that does both districts.
Oh, okay.
She's on the wellness committee and senior support, so I guess it could be either one of those people.
Okay.
They may know more what goes on in this building, so.
She used to go.
Yeah.
She's willing to, anyway, leaving out, I bet, just saying, this is gonna, this is gonna fall...
My recommendation is, if you would like to delegate to me to form the committee, I don't mind doing that.
Yes, and then at least one school board member to act as liaison. And the superintendent, or designate me.
I'm a designate, so.
You're the, oh, perfect, perfect.
I think you could designate me.
As much as Katie loves to be involved in this with the food service, it makes sense that Katie is...
This is part of my food service application every year as well, so.
Right, so it makes sense that she's involved in that.
That is a designate, yeah. You can fight over it.
Well, the good, that means you get to be asked from us if you want to.
I think it's important to have myself, but then two reps from the school.
All right, so that's three reps from the school, essentially, which is, which is more than is required.
It sounds like...
Yeah, I don't think that's very strictly.
Okay, okay. They're very clear about one school board member, though.
Right.
I am gonna say that this is something near and dear to my heart, and I am, I am willing to do this unless someone else really wants to jump right into it.
I have a cough.
All right, so we're starting, and we've had someone reach out from the PTO, someone, someone who, a community member reached out who's on the PTO that might be interested in this specifically, or?
Yes.
Excellent.
Yes.
And you'll, you'll contact that person?
Mm-hmm.
And have them contact Rich?
Okay.
The board has agreed.
Because I saw them last time.
All right, so that, so that will be, that will be the beginning of it all, and I'm really not sure, so a triennial progress report, that's three times a year, right? Although we have to meet four times a year, so it's very interesting.
It's every three years, isn't it?
Yeah, triennial, that would be like biennials every two years.
Yeah, like a three...
Yeah, 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 right. But we also have to do something annually, so it's very interesting.
Yeah, you have to, I think you have to report out to the community, department of...
Yeah, to the community and, okay, all right, well...
I have a template for the triennial assessment tool for this policy. You're basically, you know, evaluating if you've met your goals in the policy.
Now, if anyone else is...
I'm interested, I'm interested, but, as you know.
Well, there'll be a community member.
You're at it.
It could be.
It could be.
All right, so, so, so it's time to, in the next couple of months, all this will happen.
I know. I put my...
Is there anything else you need right now then, Rich?
Nope, I'll, we chose to staff and nurse to try to get that, I'll give the name from Erin and get the community member.
Excellent.
And I'll have to, you know, who to ask for the food service.
My personal thought, it should be nice to have someone who's really in the building.
If Jenny wants to do it, then she can do it. If she's not available, don't forget that.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you very much. You can tell it's near and dear to my heart, I made sure it was on, I made sure it was on...
Well, it is important because part of our application for food service, we have to, you know, show that we're actually doing some...
I see. All right, we have first readings on one, two, three, four, five, five policies, one of which is basically being replaced by another, so it's really just four policies. Have people had a chance to take a look at them? And do we, is there any discussion on any one of them? Two are required, two are highly recommended. The reasons are the last one, J I C, and the middle one, G A D A. The others are highly recommended.
I just was questioning, or curious on the first student conduct.
First on the what?
Yeah, student, student conduct. You know, I see a lot of getting the information, information out to students and parents, and I'm just wondering if, I guess, teachers included in that, or I guess that's really more of how the, how you're implementing the super budget. I mean, I see that there are three policies and rules and fighting about putting it in the calendar.
Talking about getting information out, is that what you're...
Well, I mean, it just talks about that, section B, implementation and notice, it says the content of RSA and this policy and any set of rules will be printed in the student handbooks and distributed to all students and parents, I guess, are we assuming obviously that the teachers are privy to all that, or that's something they just know?
Well, typically, there's a, typically, there's a discussion at the beginning of every school year that highlights any kind of new changes to policies, and also teachers are periodically encouraged to, all of the updates are online, for that, we know and abide by our policies. So I don't expect any teacher to go word by word and read through the policies, but they certainly should have scanned through the, through the titles and at least scanned once it's pertinent enough. And it's mostly the instruction in the student policies.
Any other questions? All right, then we will, vote on moving these to action for our next meeting. We have, we have a motion and a second. Right, the second, we have two seconds. The second, that came in first.
That was the first second.
Oh my goodness, he's on first. All in favor?
I.
Carrie's? All right, future meetings, as we all know, we'll be, we'll be meeting in the gym at nine o'clock Saturday morning, and then we have our deliberative session at 6:00 PM on February 4th. It's noted at the next school year, and on the 13th is our next school board meeting. The concert, the concert and chorus before that, for those of us who are to attend. We do have, we do have non-public, so before we adjourn, we will take a closing comment, closing comments. One of the things we'll be doing in non-public is discussing the collective bargaining agreement, then coming up, taking a vote on it in case any of you are gonna stick around for that, just hang out in the hall, I don't know how long it will be. No comments by visitors, any comments by board members? All right, then we will go into non-public, and we'll take a roll call vote in the non-public.
Judy Nelson?
Yes.
Tom Coon, Emily Lee, Andrea Anderson, Erin Cavendish. Yes.